Good evening and welcome to Rutherford County School Board. Work session tonight, first order of business is our pledge of allegiance led by a guy that's celebrating a birthday today, Mr. Aaron Holiday.
(inaudible) 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 We've had similar wording before on other projects. Not questioning Ms. Blair at all, one of my favorite people in this school system. We've had, we've had things like that before. And then we find out a year or two later that there's been a constant problems with something. And I'm not going to mention any, I think the board knows what I'm talking about. I mean, are we? I don't know what else to say.
I'm confident that she'll live up to whatever she said she'll live up to.
Well, so am I. Okay. Any, any questions, comments from the board? If I haven't already said too much? B.
B is the Homer Pitterd Campus School Walking Track. Ms. Sherri King, Principal of Homer Pitterd Campus School, has requested permission to place a walking track at the school. She has approval from Middle Tennessee State University for construction. The track will be an outdoor 200-meter concrete walking track funded by grants through Ms. Jenna Stitzel and the coordinated school health. This project will be bid and managed through the Rutherford County Schools Engineering and Construction Department. Recommend approval, a motion to approve construction of a 200-meter concrete outdoor walking track to be funded through grants at Homer Pitterd Campus School. This will be constructed similar to other walking tracks, fully funded through grants procured by Ms. Jenna Stitzel and the coordinated school health. She had to go through a lot of hoops to get approval for this one with the MTSU. And I, you know, what's it going to be made out of? How is it? A lot of things, but they finally given approval, everybody signed off, so. Go ahead with it. I, I told her, I said, "Did you bring up to them that it's, that pervy is concrete and it's really designed by the concrete construction thing at MTSU?"
Questions from the board on part B? Number nine.
Number nine, Mr. Clardy, tomorrow evening, we'll bring you pictures and updates on the projects that are going on and where we are. So, he's going to present that tomorrow evening.
I walked, excuse me, I drove by Rocky Fork Middle Sunday. It's, it is, it's there. It is, just, it seems like, other than pavement, it's ready to go. So, I was, I was impressed.
I remember the lady that, what are you laughing at, Clardy? I remember the lady-
Just waiting to see what was coming.
Well, she challenged us, if you recall, lady, didn't, a very nice lady, and I understand. But she said there was absolutely no possible way that this school was going to be open on time. I'd like for her to call me. She's watching, let's talk. Of course, it's not open yet, is it? We could have constant rainfall between now and then.
I don't know that would matter.
I don't know it would either. Number 10, Mr. Director.
Number 10 is a student discipline appeal. The board has been requested to review the May 8, 2017 decision of disciplinary hearing authority to uphold the remandment of a student from Whitworth Buchanan Middle School to Daniel McKee Alternative School. This review is pursuant to the provisions of Policy 6.317. The policy states that the board shall review the record and shall, shall review the record and shall, number one, affirm the decision of DHA or overturn the decision of the DHA or modify a decision of the DHA to a lesser penalty or grant a second hearing which would be before the board. And you have the packets, I think.
Everybody should have the packet, it was on, on your desk when we walked in.
Mr. Odom, I don't have a question about this particular case, but here at the end of the school year, if a situation where someone is remanded to Smarter West, then they would start their next school year there?
You know, they may start now, because those are pretty immediate, but it would continue into next-
It would, that's what I meant, would continue, okay.
So, even in a case like this where you've got an eighth grader that's obviously going to be transitioning to high school, that would still be the case?
It would be, I mean, we try to work really close with them, but it would.
Number 11.
Number 11, Mr. Snell has compiled some information that's interesting this evening, is just for information only. The Transportation Department has sent a letter to all contractors and drivers advising them of the bus contract award application process and explaining the first and second priority list. The lottery drawing will be held for the second priority list on Monday, June 12, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. in the boardroom. The deadline for application is Wednesday, June 7, 2017. Buses are traveling a total of 19,690 miles per day, which equates to 354,420 miles per month or 3,544,200 miles per year. This is a reduction of 147 miles per day, 2,646 miles per month, or 26,460 miles per year compared to the same period of April 2016. The implementation of the live GPS has meant a lot of route efficiencies. We've had 25 accidents with 17 injuries so far this school year compared to 21 accidents last year at this time with four injuries. On October 24, 16, Bus 58, a car ran the red light, struck the bus, causing 12 students and a driver injured. On November 18, 2016, Bus 52, a car ran into the back of the bus, causing one student injured. And then in April 12 of 17, Bus 221, the car hit the back of the bus, causing three students injured. From August 2016 through March 2017, we have paid $153,973 for Atlas Transportation compared to $166,950 in the 2015-16 year. We've pulled 629 videos so far this year compared to 525 videos at this time last year. And utilizing the INOW student database through May 1, 2017, we are showing that 26,266 students assigned to buses compared to 24,158 as of the end of September 2016. There are 21,726 students assigned to buses that live 1.5 miles or further from the school compared to 19,809 as of the end of 2016. Remember, the state reimburses us, or we get partial reimbursement for those that are at least a mile and a half. But you have for a long time with the board, typically if the bus comes by the house, even if it's in a mile and a half, we have, if we have capacity, we pick up students. So, you've done that for the citizens for a long time.
Questions from the board?
Just a matter of clarification, the November 18, 2016 incident, am I remembering correctly, was that the one where the fatality was involved on the other?
You remember the date?
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to make sure, I wasn't aware that we had one student injured that day, I was thinking we had no injuries, but it's accurate that we had one student injured. I'm glad to see.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Yeah, that lines up exactly to what I was looking for, thanks.
Three and a half million miles per year. Any, any other questions? Insurance update, anything? Twenty-fifth, director's update.
Nothing much today, we, we have not gotten the BEP estimates, you know, yet. We expect them sometime this week, should have them for next Monday for our meeting. They kind of waited till the legislature adjourned because they were still looking at budget up until the last day, so hopefully by next Monday we'll have any new, that would be the revenue numbers primarily, and hopefully that'll be very good for us, but we'll know when they come in. Ms. Williams, Mr. Sandvig attended a state meeting on that. Do y'all have anything you want to report about the state meeting that was, we mentioned a little bit the other day, this per pupil expenditure by school is going to be the most interesting thing.
We'll see how the pilot goes this year. It looks as though the things that they are asking that we report by school, and really this, it looks like it may be unfolding their only selected items that they specifically want us to record by school and that everything else will be allocated, so.
Pro-rated, or something based on, they're going to pro-rate it based on-
Right, mm-hmm, yeah.
That makes sense.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Director? Questions? Ms. Moore, number 14.
Well, the General Assembly has officially adjourned.
Woo!
We are done until-
And we're still open.
And what?
We're still open.
Still open, we're still standing, and in accordance with the feedback we got from TSBA, I guess none of the bills that TSBA was actively opposing passed. There are a few things, it looks like there's going to be, there was a committee formed and going to be a summer study on the RTI funding, BEP review committee. But again, everything's closed up for this year, so, and none of the bills that we were actively opposing made it through, so I guess you could say it was a successful year.
Number 15, Mr. Holiday.
Kind of jumping right off of what Ms. Moore just reported there, there was a national article that was run, I believe in U.S. News and World Report that was talking about the criticism of the state of Tennessee and the supermajority Republican legislature for not being able to accomplish the national Republican platform of vouchers and the expectation that surely vouchers would pass with, with President Trump being elected, with Betsy DeVos being appointed, with all of these winds of change, and yet Tennessee could not find it to even put the pilot program in place because the very citizens that they were proposing to benefit in Memphis stood up and said, "No." Exactly what Mr. Hodge has said over and over, you can't go, you know, handing out checks and leave failing schools in place. And so if you don't have a plan for these failing schools, you're sabotaging our public education system, and that is what, what vouchers will do. But it's very, very interesting, there was, there was criticism, not only in general, but specifically of Speaker Harwell and her failure in leadership. And some of the other legislators have, have come to her defense, and there really seems to be a, a real shift in, in opinion about this issue. And, and we, of course, we cannot be complacent, we cannot let up one, one bit. But the American Federation for Children or Americans for Prosperity, one of these national organizations, their national director voiced some criticism about the state of Tennessee, and in response to that, the four lobbyists for that organization here in the state of Tennessee quit. And said, you know, in, in kind of protest of, you know, "Look, you're not here in the trenches with us, fine, you figure it out." And they quit and walked away. So, there's disorganization on the other side, there's national criticism, but the spotlight is shining on what we're doing right in public education in the state of Tennessee and our lack of need for these vouchers. We continue to advance forward, and as we work very, very hard with the higher standards that the state is putting in front of us, I think we can continue to do that. Curiously enough, separate issue, the Secretary of Education, Betsy DeVos, turned down an invitation to speak to the National Convention of the Educator-Journalist Association. So, the people who write on education for all of the publications across the country, they all got together, and year after year after year, the Secretary of Education would come and address them. Secretary DeVos said, "No, thanks," because typically it's a question and answer type of setting. And she could not find time in her schedule to, to answer any questions that these journalists might have had for her, so, curious events.
To comment on, on the first part of what you said there, I, I feel like we just, on this voucher thing, this board has, has been in opposition to this before I got here, and it's continued, and I guess accelerated, not through any particular effort of mine, just us. And I feel like it's been going on forever. But I, I think also, maybe we're getting now, and you kind of alluded to this a little bit, Mr. Holiday, we've actually got a mountain now of facts and figures that show that they don't work.
Yeah. For the first time, I'm, I'm just going to interject, for the first time, this U.S. News and World Report article actually stated, and so this was a, a journalistic publication that stated, "One of the primary factors that interfered with the passage of vouchers in the state of Tennessee was data that came back that said voucher students are not performing even as well as their public school counterparts."
Any other comments from board members? Sir?
No, sir.
Yeah. And, and you're right, too, about paying attention. I mean, it's, we may well have to fight this battle again and again and again, I, I don't know. I don't have any idea what will come up next January, but we shall see. Anything else, Mr. Holiday?
Good.
Okay, general discussion by board members, comments on anything?
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
A couple of months ago, we voted 7-0 on a piece of property out off Ambleville Road for three schools. I don't believe anybody's brought us anything any better than that since that time. It may be time for us to revisit that and, and see what we can do about getting some schools out there. You just drive out 840, there's a new house pops up every day or two. We may need to go back and look at that again. In fact, I think we probably do need to, pretty quick, before it's gone, because there's nothing else out that'll wait for sale. Plus, it has the water and the gas, and I believe, I may be wrong, but about the lowest rep work we've had on a school in a long time as far as excavation, is that right? Yes, it's flat, it's fairly flat over in the area of the school, so it would probably, I know it'd be a lot less work than Rocky Fork was.
I just happened to drive down Ambleville Road 296, and the Ocala Road is widened, paved, and has little concrete, not a shoulder, but curbs. And it's, it's looking road now. Also, went down a little further, and there's a huge subdivision being developed right across Rocky, Rocky Fork Road runs into Ambleville Road, and right across the street, they're developing, the subdivision's going to be 100-plus homes. And it's, and it's being developed right now, and there's all kinds of pockets of subdivisions, some built, being built on, too, and some just kind of, somebody's taken five acres of land and they're going to put, you know, eight to 10 homes there. So, it's, it's like, it's like a flower blooming, it's, it's, there's so many houses everywhere, but I just specifically saw that today.
I agree, I'd hate to see that opportunity get by us, I mean, we'd sit too long on this, we could lose a good deal right here. We really need to revisit.
I will just share that from my point of view, it's still the right piece of property for us to be pursuing. It can be a slightly better situation if we could find an outlet on the backside, and I don't know all those street names, but right now we're set up that we would connect in with the back of a neighborhood, and then there's another street back there that we, we'd love to be able to get a little bit of flag to be able to connect to. If we get that, I don't see how anyone can raise an objection to this. But even without that, we have shown ourselves, most notably at Stewart's Creek, with the, with the neighbors and the neighborhoods that are adjacent to that property, what absolute good neighbors the school can be and how conscientious we are of traffic flows and such. So, even without that, it's the right piece of property, but man, get that, and it ought to be just a dead cinch.
Before we called the dogs off the last time on this piece of property, I was in the process of negotiating with the developer to buy a five-acre strip of land out to Burntob Road. So, I don't know if that's still available or not, but it's a possibility it could be.
That's the thing, you know, one of the criticisms is, is will Ocala be continued and will Ocala eventually connect to something else because it, it kind of goes as access to this property, and, and that's just a matter of development, that's a matter of time and things will, will happen. And we are accustomed to the school system leading the way in, in some of these development efforts. We put things in place and, and other, and, and other areas of infrastructure come alongside, so. But that five-acre piece, for me, just makes it, makes it a cinch.
The morning paper, and I don't know, Ms. Clardy, if you've read it or not, but I mean, the headline was Burntob Road and Baker Road, which are getting fairly close to, to what we looked at, and construction and paving and widening and complete with traffic lights. I mean, it, for, for us to just kind of look the other way and, and act like this general area of the county is not going to explode in the next, well, real close future, I think, I think that's a bad idea. I, I mean, you know, I, and also, we were kind of, well, dismissed that this was not a good piece of property and that we need to look at others. And on that very day, we looked at how many, five? Five or six different pieces of property on that day? I mean, let me get with, with Mr. Clardy and, and with the director, and let's, let's get this back on a, a future agenda. And by future, I'm talking about, you know, within, within a month. And, and, and let's see, and, and you may have more discussion right now, I'm not, I'm not trying to cut off discussion at all. I, I, I think that we are at a time where the, the county commission is, is aware of, of our growth and that it pretty much is all over the county, and when you look at what we are considering building and adding on to, it just goes from one border to the next, and we're going as fast as we can within reason. I mean, it's pretty obvious, we're going to need, they don't want to hear this, but it's the truth, we're going to need a three, three-school complex, and that won't be the last one. I mean, you might as well just say it out loud, and I, I think that's a pretty good site, I mean, that was my opinion that day, I-
You know, we've really got to look down the road because I would predict that we need four sites, four three-school sites over the next several years, and right now it's going to be the cheapest time to buy that property unless the bottom falls out of the economy or something like that happens. So, I don't know, I haven't talked to the developer in a few months now, so I don't know if, how his option is and how quick it runs out on that piece of property, but that would play into the deal. So, perhaps I could go ahead and contact him-
Please.
-and find out, and that might cause us to react with some kind of urgency to get this thing back on there, and it may not, we may have a little time, I really don't know, but we need to, if y'all are truly interested in getting it back on there, we need to, I need to do some research on it pretty quickly in the next few days. I doubt what a minimum would be as far as tying that property up, to see what he would have to have in order to say, "We'll tie this property up for Rutherford County Schools." I can contact him tomorrow and see if he can start thinking about it, or if he has some idea of whatever. In other words, we would like take first option to buy it with a deposit, is that what you're-
Right.
-suggesting, okay.
You know, I asked Mr. Morgan to take a look at other properties in that area, and he hasn't found another one with the acreage and the things that's really that, that viable for us. There's a couple of other things that have happened since then also. One of our meetings, Commissioner Jeff Phillips spoke and said, you know, he said he was, he had been riding around and looking at the growth, and we're seeing how difficult it's going to be to find property for schools, and he actually made the statement that we may have to help, the county may have to build, help build some roads to make some of this happen. He actually said that at one of the meetings, and of course, the other thing that's happened since then, with the passage of the Governor's Improve Act and with the sharing of the gas money, the county does receive now, they will receive additional funds tied to the gas tax, you know, for projects and all. You, this, people are beginning to recognize it.
Conversation, oh, I guess it's been about three weeks ago now, maybe a touch more, with Commissioner Gurley, who I've, who I've found to be extremely able. And, but I think he, I don't want to put words in his mouth, and I don't know his opinion on everything, but I think he was, he's very much aware of, of our needs, let's put it that way. And that, that we have a lot of problems because of growth and of where to build and what to build. We have, once we have budget, yes, sir?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Sandvig if we have any alternate for, you know, financing this piece of property, maybe.
We can see how fund balance comes out. We don't have, we don't, we won't, we have, I think one of our high priorities needs to be preparing for open-
I think one of our high priorities needs to be preparing for opening Rocky Fork High, but if we come out with a strong fund balance, we might have some monies toward, to be put toward land, that would already be shared money, so we'd have to work out that mix and all issue, but we still would have to have County Commission approval in order to use it that way.
You know, the other piece that was really, um, at the, at the meeting that you attended, um, the high-growth districts, they have actually added eighteen million to that, so it was eighteen new money, million, um, which was fifteen before, and a couple of years ago, three years ago, ten million, but they've changed it now, and only the districts that were getting it before were two percent or higher, which we're running about two-point-nine-seven-nine-eight percent growth, something like that, almost three. Um, but if, they're saying now that they're going to give monies to every school district in the state that has growth, so we don't really know, I mean, even if they added to it, are the pie slices so small now, that you might not come up with as much, or would you come up with more? We just, I just really do not know, and that's a July timeframe there, uh, before they notify anybody for, when the school years closed out, closed out all the books, they do that.
And Ms. Durski said it would be June thirtieth this year, before we got the final allocation of the current year's growth funds.
I, I, I think also, in considering this land, and one of the things that the County Commission came to us, and I, I know that Mr. Clardy's been working on this, but we need to complete the analysis of all of our existing acreage, and where can we have expansions, uh, where is it viable for us to, to be able to expand, because that helps us to be able to make the case for, we've considered the options, because one of the things that keeps coming back to us is when we say, "Look, we need to buy this hundred-and-ten acres, uh, at eight forty in Alma Ville Road, because we know the growth is going to happen there, and we want to be ahead of the curve." That's good stewardship of the taxpayers' dollars, and, and inevitably, they come back, they, whoever they may be, the General Public, County Commission, uh, anybody, and they say, "Well, can't you expand in the schools where you are?" "Yes, we can, and we can do it here, and here, and here, and here." We want to be able to answer authoritatively that question, and, and speak to that with our two-story, uh, annexes that we're putting in place, uh, with the careful design that we're thinking about, with the capacity of this core of these schools, um, let's, let's get our, let's get all of our wheels polished up and, and hit this thing, and, and push it across the line this time. We need that hundred-and-ten acres at Alma Ville.
I know, we're working on six or seven right now, that, that, looking at with the architect addition, the, the problem is, they're not in that area.
Right, right.
You really can't add at Stewart's Creek Middle, or the high school, or the elementary, that, that's our problem there.
Yeah.
What we're talking, where we're looking is in, really in other parts of the county, because that's out.
Right. We're, I, I'm not suggesting that this is going to change the need at Alma Ville and eight forty, that need is there, and I'm a hundred percent convinced of that, but the objection comes, and we go, "Well, we'll look into that, or we'll study that." We need to be able to authoritatively say, "Yes, we can expand right here, right here, right here," and none of that answers the question right over here. Keep your eye on eight forty in Alma Ville, we need this hundred-and-ten acres.
And I, I've been working on that, I may try, if I've got some time tomorrow, I'll try to finish putting that together, and have that as part of my presentation tomorrow night.
Great.
We went to that meeting, and, and Mr. Clardy, you were there, and I was there, and the director was there, and, um, please correct me if I'm wrong, if my memory has, has failed me a little bit, we got, everything was, well, at the end of the day, everything was okay, except that land, and we kind of stood up for it, recommended it, and we were told pretty much, "No." Am I, am I okay so far?
Yeah, I, I think that there wasn't an objection to land, I think it was an objection to that land.
Yeah, well, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear, that location, all right. Um, but now, it, when I left that room, it was my understanding that they were going to help us maybe make a suggestion or two about perhaps other areas, if, and they were going to do a little work on this, isn't that right? Or, no?
Yes, uh, I think they felt like that we could find a better piece of property, and that they might have had some suggestions to make towards which, some locations and different things, but, um, when this thing kind of got pushed off the side, I think everything just got pushed off the side.
Well, Mr. Estes is, is, is right, at, at least as far as he's concerned, he, no one's contacted him, no one's talked to me about another piece of property or another area where we might consider that, uh, and (laugh) I'm, I'm not sure, it seems like the, the duties, which I, I'm absolutely sure that Mr. Hodge and Mr. Young both made this point to me the next day, almost, was that we had done what we were supposed to do, you all jump in here and, and cut me down if I'm wrong, w- we had done what we were supposed to do, as best we knew how to do it, and the answer was no, it was no before we even started. Uh, that was the first thing that was brought up at the meeting, I do remember that, that this piece of property was not going to do. Well, (laugh) yes, it will, (laugh) it will do fine.
Well, there's some objections about Burntob Road, for one thing, I recall that.
Yeah.
And now the city is annexing part of that road, and going to make it four-lane out there, and curb it, and bring it up to city standard, so there's only going to be a small section of it from that five acres I was talking about down to the city, so it's possible that, who knows, maybe I can get the developer to put that in if we can cut a deal or something, I don't know, I just have to work on it.
Okay. Are you going to present something to us tomorrow night, is that, is, isn't that putting a pretty good push on you, isn't it?
Um, I'll, if I can find out, I'll tell you what I found out.
Okay.
If I can find out anything.
All right, we'll just continue this tomorrow night, if, if any other questions, feel free, board, say whatever. Okay, if nothing on that, Subsik, uh, we're still in general discussion, is there anything else?
I'll just report to the board that, uh, last Thursday evening, uh, there were two events that took place, one I got to go to, and one that I hate that I missed. Uh, Central Magnet had their, uh, awards ceremony for their senior class, and I've gone to that in the past, and I know that it's just absolutely a phenomenal event, where the, uh, the awards, the scholarships, the student achievement is just incredible, and I, as we, as we approach our graduations, I'm sure looking forward to, uh, to seeing all of the Central graduates, and all of the graduates across the county, but, uh, all of those that achieved so much. But the event that I did get to go to was the Fine Arts Banquet, uh, for Stewart's Creek, uh, High School, and they celebrated the performing arts, the visual arts, uh, the dramatic arts, choral, and music, uh, with the bands. Uh, there must have been four hundred or more, uh, students there, a hundred and fifty parents, uh, it was just a wonderful experience, and one of the things that I want to point out is, no matter what that student was, no matter where they came from, or, or, or what their, uh, you know, grade point average was, or physical appearance was, as they walked up to the podium to receive their recognition and things of that nature, every single one of them walked up there confident, poised, uh, conducted themselves, uh, with the, the, just the highest, uh, standards, um, they were really an excellent presentation of citizenship, um, and then after it was all over with, they turned on the music and opened up the dance floor, and everybody acted exactly like they were a, a teenager in, uh, in one of our schools, and so they knew when to conduct themselves, uh, like young adults, and they knew when to conduct themselves like young adults, and, uh, it was just, it was just inspiring, uh, I enjoyed it so very much, and, uh, as the opportunities come around again, uh, I certainly hope that all of our board members will get those invitations and those opportunities.
We're certainly going to get an opportunity in, uh, in the next six, seven days to see, um, a lot of really great teachers and staff and principals, and certainly thousands of students. I'm, I'm looking forward to it, I think the first one is Wednesday night, be my first graduation at Stewart's, with Stewart's Creek, so I'm looking forward to that, but there are many others, and I know all of us, I appreciate it, those of you that are able to go to one or more of those. Uh, anything else on general discussion? If not, I feel a German in our future, almost immediately. Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.